Okay, ladies and gentlemen, we're about to begin this afternoon's workshop. The purpose of the workshop is to go through the superintendent's interim assessment, the board attorney's evaluation instrument, and the legislative platform. I sent out to you a summary of what I thought the suggestions were that I pulled out from all of the comments. What I pulled out, please don't feel that that's the final document. Please feel free to step in. I'm just trying to help us organize our work a little bit. I also did something with the pros that were in the evaluations of the superintendent. I'm just going to read through what I pulled out as thinking there were common themes in the various categories for which we evaluated the superintendent, and you all have received copies of those. So first, educational leadership. Identifying and recruiting quality candidates internally and externally for leadership positions. He hires candidates best suited for working in a collaborative, child-focused culture. There is a data-based focus on teaching and learning, using assessments to evaluate programs and allocate resources. Vision 2020, now Vision 2030, is permeating district culture. And there's greater two-way communication with stakeholders, community and staff engagement in strategic work. Under professional leadership, the common themes seem to be: the superintendent's drive, focus, passionate advocacy for children, and work ethic inspire change, motivation, and improvement. He is an impeccable role model. His integrity and collaborative style are impacting community perception of district leadership and are critical to gaining staff and board support for the drive to transform the district. There is a significant increase in community engagement. His presence in schools is commendable, as is his effort to educate the public about the sales tax referendum.
Yes, Morgan?
Oh, it's up there!
Yeah, it's already posted, and all of us have already received that.
Oh, so I don't need to read it?
In Chris's vernacular.
Oh, okay. All right, but I also, because it's being recorded, I really want to, for those who are viewing it, I want to be able to move quickly through this. So I appreciate your comment, Mr. Toyber, but please indulge me for the viewing public. Executive leadership. No, wait, where was I? Significant increase in community engagement, presence in schools is commendable, as is his effort to educate the public about the sales tax referendum. He engaged in forums, reaching interest groups across the district. He is placing importance on identifying and supporting emergent leaders. Executive leadership. Vision 2020 and now Vision 2030 is a perfect example of his executive leadership and commitment to continuous improvement. His proactive development and prioritization of plans in support of Vision 2020, the district technology plan and the safety and security plan, for example. He has made a notable effort to focus staff on improving efficiency and cost effectiveness in all areas of district operations. With respect to community leadership, his communications within the district and to stakeholders have a greater reach and penetration. The NAACP MOU is a great example of publicly embracing community diversity. The superintendent's communications are conveyed with honesty and transparency, fact-based, inspiring community confidence in his leadership and the district's vision, and he is the student's strongest advocate, a clear message that resonates in his community meetings and school visits. So now I will just say, is there anything that has not been conveyed in this summary that you would really like to report for the record in terms of comments you've made about superintendent's performance at this point?
I'd just like to add, maybe to number four, under community leadership, I'm seeing a relentlessness associated with the focus on student, and I just feel like the word relentless should be in there. Sorry to be a pain, but...
He is the student's strongest advocate?
He's a relentless advocate for our students?
Okay. Okay. Is everybody comfortable with that? Lisa? Now, with respect to the suggestions, first of all, I want to make clear that, from my point of view, and again, we can have this conversation if you disagree, we're not here to talk about goals. We're really here to talk about suggestions that we have for Dr. Atkins based on the strategic plan that we have in place and what we perceive his role to be in the execution of that plan. So I did the same thing. You all received the summary I did, and I've asked Denise to facilitate a conversation about the suggestions.
For sure. So thank you very much, and good afternoon. So as you can see up on the screen, as Mrs. Morgan indicated, we do have a summary of the suggestions or opportunities, and I do want to put a footnote on this that Mrs. Morgan indicated that she looked across evaluations, because again, the context of our conversation today is what are those areas of priority from the board as a whole, not individually, but as a whole, as we move forward through the next several months of Dr. Atkins' tenure. So again, we have a series of suggestions that are broken down by category within his evaluation, his interim assessment. Certainly, the first four focusing on educational leadership. I know you had an opportunity to review those, looking at academic services and coordination and culture and distribution of workload that continue focus on the whole child, so academically as well as social-emotional. Yes, sir?
And I understand what you're trying to convey in that, but the whole child, the words just, I just don't like it. I mean, I just don't like, I mean, to me, I understand what we're trying to do and the components that make up student development, and I understand to do that, and we're trying to do, to hit all these different aspects of child development, child learning, or student learning, I mean, maybe it's a child word, I mean, I don't know, but just the whole child just seems to be so esoteric and nebulous that, you know, for an educational institution, for us to understand the components of, you know, the healthcare and so on, and mental stability, those are all, we realize as the, you know, critical, you know, parts of the equation, but I'm just struggling.
So would a comprehensive curriculum sound better, be more succinct to that?
Yeah, something a little bit more discrete, finite, yeah.
And that was my comment, and that came out of some reports that I had heard back regarding the social-emotional learning component and how difficult that is to integrate that now after we've been away from it for a period of time, and that it's being, it's part of the academic plan, and so, yeah, but a comprehensive curriculum, I think, would be more inclusive to that.
And if I may, when we talk about the whole child, and I'll talk as an educator, as Mrs. Fisher and others will do in just a moment, when we think about the whole child, we're really looking at more than just the academics, right? And I think that's what Mrs. Fisher is going towards, academics, it's emotional, it's social, the whole spectrum of needs relative to a child, right?
Yeah, where we have to look at the terms in a sense of how educators deserve it, but also how the community receives it, parents receive it.
For sure. So we can substitute that piece or further explain it, is what I'm hearing.
One other area we might want to look at is in Vision 2030, the strategic objective for student success is to meet the social, the academic and social-emotional developmental needs, fundamental developmental needs of every student. So that kind of sums up that without saying whole child?
Right.
So that would be more specific, even?
Yeah, absolutely. Okay, so we can play with that certainly.
But then, taking it as a suggestion, so if you take the strategic plan goal, then what you really want to focus on, staff need training and support opportunity for, so I think from a suggestions point of view, to enhance what we're asking Dr. Atkins is, let's do what we can to make certain that we have the resources and training in place to support that particular piece of the strategic plan, because that's where we think there's some real exposure.
Yes, absolutely. That's not the perfect...
...and current efficiency based upon what Dr. Atkins found himself with.
How does that sound to you?
No, that's good, yeah.
Okay, so then the other two items under strengths, or excuse me, under suggestions, we're really thinking about all principals embracing their role as increasing family and community engagement, so we can do that certainly as a district, but making sure that principals clearly understand that particular role that they hold within the community, within their school community, and then continuing to develop in Vision 2030, which we just board approved a couple of months ago, making sure that that's deeply embedded with fidelity in our organization.
Is that in 2030?
Is SEL?
No, no, is the role of principals, I know it's articulated by us and it's articulated by the superintendent, but I'm just wondering where in the...
Exactly.
Yeah, but here, there's a specific recommendation with respect to the role of the principals.
Yep, so we know in our success factors in Vision 2030, we identify the importance of family and community engagement, and as we start to drill down into our key strategic initiatives, we know that we do have that role of the leader. So as we start to develop our department improvement plans and enhance those, as well as our school improvement plans, that's a good point. We want to make sure that that is embedded if we're identifying this as a priority today.
But I think what Ms. Morgan's talking about is the fact that I believe, and I'd like to input from out of here from all the board, but I think one of the things that Dr. Atkins feels that I know, but it's really not embodied really in our vision, our principals may break us. I mean, to be able to elevate that, not just to be able to be a drill-down in our focus, but to move that up higher in the tier of priorities, because we have to, we have to have, our principals may P's, the focus on what they do, how they do it, the training, the cultivation of getting APEs, to be ready to be principals across the board, I mean, that's a full-time, and I know, you know, Dr. Pruitt is big into that as well, and I think that we really need to give board support focus on that, because that is critical.
Okay. Anything else on the first section relative to educational leadership? Any other clarifications there?
Well, the first one talks about academic services. Do we want to talk about that?
Let's talk about it, sure.
Right there.
I had compliments to be, by the way, from you, by the way.
Your name came up quite frequently, I think you must have noticed, right?
Okay, so let's take a look at this first one and make sure that we're all understanding it in the same way.
I didn't write that, so I can't.
So how do you read this one?
Just to be honest, I read it as, there's a level of discomfort and perhaps some resistance in some parts of the district to the changes that we've made in academic services, and this is a response to some of that resistance. That's how I read it, and I'm not sure that, not sure there's anything more the superintendent or Dr. Pruitt can do to...
There's no suggestion there?
No, yeah, exactly.
Okay, so then maybe what we'll do is we will focus on educational leadership for just a moment.
Where it says, note the impact of changes with limited time for training and planning for implementation. So that has been something that has been voiced around the district, so maybe the suggestion could be, you know, to provide enough of a timeline for preparation and implementation of the changes. And to make sure that everyone who is affected by those changes, e.g., down to the classroom teacher and the paraprofessional, know about it, you know, so I think it's partly a communication thing, but...
And so as we talk about looking at the changes that have occurred at the end of quarter one into quarter two, and so I wonder if the recommendation around that is continued support, training necessary to be able to implement those changes? Is that what we're looking at? Because we can't go back to the beginning of quarter one, we are where we are.
But I think what Mrs. Fisher is saying is that it's helpful if everybody knows the platform and the timeline and where they are on that platform and in that timeline, right down...
Right, and who's responsible for what.
Exactly.
I think that I've noticed in some of the comments I've received, a level of confusion and like, oh my gosh, you know, there's not enough time to do this. Not that any of it's bad, it's just that we need to be...
So clearly communicate.
Clearly communicate.
And support along the way.
People being informed and then knowing what it is they have to do and who's responsible for what.
I understand, okay.
And it's funny, too, I got a comment the other day from a teacher, something along the lines of, I'd rather hear about this from the district than on social media, but it was the district that pushed it out on social media. So I felt like that was communication directly from the district, so maybe just utilizing multiple platforms for communication, because not everybody consumes information the same way.
Right, exactly. We talked about that with parents even, haven't we? How they prefer to get their information, so, good point. Okay, anything else on educational leadership? Any other clarifications or suggestions, additional suggestions?
I just want to note on this one in particular, I feel like, I feel like we have two choices. We could implement these changes before the beginning of the school year, or have the students wait a whole nother year for these improvements to take place. So I understand that there's a perception and perhaps a reality of not everybody was fully on board, but I think we did the right thing for students rather than making them wait another year without this stuff in place. So I just, I felt the need to say that.
So then explain that, because if those people who have to implement these changes are not on board and not real sure about what they're supposed to do, how does that work?
Well, I think that partial implementation is better than no implementation.
Well, and I think, too, I think to Chris's point, you know, we had a choice, and they jammed, you know, we jammed a lot into a summer. Nobody liked it, but it was what it was. We chose to do that, we jammed it in there. I think it's to be sensitive that it got jammed and people got, you know, overwhelmed, and it was a lot. Okay, we get that, but we're, you know, but we're still pushing, now we're, you know, we're not as fast, because we got that whole first wave out there, so now we can just let everybody recover and just continue to move with it, and just, like you said, constant communication, the empathy of acknowledging, yeah, we did put a lot up. I mean, I thought it was when the plan got presented to me, I thought, you guys are crazy, it'll never happen. Well, it happened, but there was a lot of destruction in the path, because it was a lot of change quickly.
And one of the things I wanted to comment was that for our big number of career changers and our newer teachers, I think a lot of those changes were extremely helpful and necessary, but then there was the other component of the more experienced, seasoned educators who were like, oh my gosh, you just upset my entire apple cart, and I don't know what to do about it, yeah.
And that's a, that's a part where, you know, I think through the communication that Dr. Pruitt does, for example, they do, they do communication via webinar and where they talk to principals, it's something that comes up in principal meetings, it's something that I, that I address individually, and I know that, I'm sure she and her staff do as well, is, you know, there is more flexibility than you might originally interpret. I know that we had, we had also put something out as it related to the data dialogues that, you know, some people wanted to absolutely fill out the entire document, and, but there was, there was more flexibility afforded than, than what some of them initially took it to be. So whenever you're implementing, you know, tremendous change, which I think is what we're doing, you're going to have these, you know, these challenges that, you know, communication can help you overcome. I do appreciate the comment about, you know, we do have a lot of career changers, you know, I was out at Harns Marsh Middle, and I think the number he, Alex, gave me was like seventy-six percent of their teachers at Harns Marsh Middle are career changers. And the other piece that you see a lot in the East Zone that we have to, that we're working on changing with Dr. Pruitt, is we've got a lot of inexperience there, because they want to be, they want to live closer to home, they don't want to have that long commute, if they live in Cape Coral or in Longham McGregor Corridor or down in Three Oaks, and they want to kind of be in their area rather than be out at Mere Lakes, for example. We have to, in our compensation, we're going to have to compensate for that in terms of how we reward teachers, so critically important moving forward, so we can change that current paradigm. You know, when I go visit schools in the West Zone, you run across people that I personally have known for years, and, you know, that, because they, you know, yeah, they live there, I've grown up with, then if you go to the East, it's a different thing, and we've got to, so it's a, it's a challenge that we're going to have to work on, and I think with getting any of these new teachers, career changers, really on track fast, they've got to have a plan, and I, so there's a lot of great work that went together putting those plans in place.
So let me ask a question as your facilitator. When we look at all of the suggestions, and I believe we have upwards of twenty suggestions, so we have a favorite saying, "In continuous improvement, if everything's a priority, nothing's a priority," right?
Exactly.
So when we look at this first section here, and I say in educational leadership, would someone like to throw out a top priority or two, because that's a lot, and that's just a couple of areas, and we've got three more areas we need to cover, is there something here that you would like to advocate as a board in terms of a top priority? Mr. Pruitt?
Again, my number one is principals. That's my number one, but my number two is, is I think to Ms. Fisher's point, is that last sentence on that first bullet point is the empathy of, you know, we're moving forward very good, make sure we keep our hands back to people that we got delusional first time and bring them up, you know, so that we're continuing to say, look, you know, we'll pull you up onto the train, because it's still moving, you know, but we're going to help you, and I think that that empathy, that of the teachers, not the ones that we were targeting this for, you know, our new teachers and our, and our career changers, but the ones that were already, you know, it wasn't broke wide, we have to fix it type of mentality, it's like, look, we don't want to, we don't really want to have you start over, we just want to make you a little better.
Yeah, keep on your game, but let's bring everybody along. I would just call that emotional and technical support.
So combining the two, when you're, when you're really focused on data, which is what we've become, the challenge, I think, for some principals is, how do I put this? Some principals are more comfortable dealing with data than with interpersonal relationships. Data makes it easy to be, I won't say critical, but to be focused on professional development with, and then if you're not using those soft skills when you're working with your teachers, that really gets in the, that gets in the way, I think, as much as the training and the, I just think the principals need, and the other comment I wanted to make, because I'm losing track here, we are not evaluating, we are not having the people impacted by these changes, evaluating the support that they're getting. So for example, we know that we have teacher leaders, we know we have content people, we know we have different kinds of people. The goal is to provide that support based, in the classroom, based on what the principal sees is going on, but we don't have any way of really telling the people who are providing the services whether or not they're getting the job done. And that's, that's, right now for us, that's a huge expense, because that's all, that's a people expense, and I think we ought to have some way to assess that those resources are being deployed.
What about the surveys we do at the end of the week?
Yeah, but see, the surveys are, you know, is the, I think it's a teacher, what's the teacher survey called? Teacher satisfaction, climate.
Climate survey.
Climate, but does that really measure...
We do separate surveys to see how teachers feel about their mentors, how they feel about their teacher leaders.
Oh, do you?
They're separate survey, yes.
Ah, okay, then I will withdraw my comment. There you go. Okay.
All right, so we are hearing support around the role of the principal, and making sure that we're pulling everybody together, some tiered support along the way, based on where I am with my proficiency as a teacher and a support team member?
Right, my consistent communication.
And communication, yes, okay. All right, so we're going to move to the next section. Oh, thank you for picking that up. Okay, so we're going to look at professional leadership, just a reminder about the strengths here. As I mentioned, we'll review those, and then we'll flip back to the suggestions. Okay? And we're just going to focus on this section of professional leadership. So we have the first one, talking about those opportunities for communication, there's that word again, people we're talking about, to collaborate on priorities, identifying issues of concern, some work around succession planning and notifying the board, keeping us engaged in what's happening, not only with school but also senior staff, continuing to drive 2030 forward, and then also looking at superintendent in terms of his own practice, professional development, continuous improvement, all of those leading to innovation change and continued improvement within the district. So as we think about those, are there any clarity, any clarity that we need to provide, and then let's identify some priorities, because again, if everything's there, it's hard to, hard to get your head around what's the top priority or two.
And the last one, Dr. Atkins, you have a mentor that you collaborate with?
I did, I don't any longer.
Oh, you don't have him any longer?
Yeah, and Fad's, Fad's never assigned one. Dr. Gorman, I think the last time he was here was in March, so we haven't, we haven't been in touch, well, we've been in touch the email. He, he felt, I'll just be candid with you, he felt that, he questioned his own, he thought you've got a great team, he was very complimentary, he felt that, I think, there wasn't a total full understanding of the culture that he was involved in, and what did not feel as effective as he would like to have been. And I respect, I respect that assessment. I mean, he had to take a hard look in the mirror to come up with that, and it was, you know, I think he had made some recommendations to us as an executive team that actually probably caused us more, more problems than it solved without, because he didn't fully understand the people and the culture that he had, was making those recommendations. I think he regretted some of that, because the team and I had to, I think, work through that individually on our own, and now we, he, I noticed he hadn't, he hadn't contacted me in a little bit, so I reached out to him and, and wanted to see how he was doing, and then he, that was his comment back, so I know that, but anyway, I think in the meantime, he started out making some pretty good recommendations, I think, and there were some things that we certainly acted upon. He helped validate some of the things that we were doing, which was helpful. It was kind of neat to see that a lot of the practices that he had done in some of his, his super tendencies, both in California and also in Charlotte Mecklenburg, were things we were already doing, or had actually were doing at a greater level, like I think the career ladder stuff and things like that. So, you know, I think we got along just fine, so it wasn't a personality conflict, I think it's, you know, just he didn't feel he could be effective, because he didn't quite understand our culture all the way. And I don't know if anybody, member of my team, wants to comment, I tried to sum that up, because I know you guys are all involved in that, so...
Yes, ma'am. So the first one, I don't understand it, because I believe that we've set our priorities. What priorities are we supposed to be collaborating on other than the priorities embedded in the strategic plan? So I wasn't, I wondered where that comment was coming from.
Any comments from our board members? And could be the two that are absent, I'm not sure.
Yeah, I don't know.
If anyone has a comment on that.
The only thing that comes up for me there is being open to staff feedback, but, I mean, we already have the teacher advisory committee, you still meet with them, right, Dr. Atkins?
I'm reconvening that group, yeah, different, it's got a, it's, we've literally lost probably somewhere in our neighborhood, about fifty percent of that group to promotions and transfers, so we have to literally start it over.
So what I'm thinking about is what came up in the finance advisory committee the other day, Walmart just saved an obscene amount of money by moving to LED lights in their, in their stores, like crazy savings. And so having a way to accept outside-the-box thinking from staff about ways that we can get better. And I know a suggestion box is a ridiculous idea in a, in a district of this size, but the equivalent of that for the district, because, because I think that our staff has really good ideas... Because I think that our staff has really good ideas, not all of them are legal, meaning, and I don't mean that they would purposely break the law, but sometimes they don't understand the statutory structure. But I think that they have some really good ideas, they're in the classroom every day. So I didn't write that, but when I read that, that's what I thought. Collaboration in terms of being open to ideas, having those ideas come to high-level staff so that they can vet them and determine whether they will be useful to students and whether they fit into statutory structure.
So it's less about priorities, more about action plans?
It is, it's more about the people who, I mean, our priorities are academic achievement. So who's responsible actually for impacting the students to help with that academic achievement? It's people in the trenches. So when they're not collaborating, when they're not involved in the decision-making, and when they have ideas that they want to share or try, I think it's just more opportunity for them to be involved in the action plan, and that's a perfect way of saying it, yeah.
So it may be some additional opportunities, because what I'm listening to is there are some opportunities, but maybe there's a perception that there might not be sufficient, because we all could go around the table, probably name those opportunities where our staff has input, and maybe there's that need for additional opportunities, I'm wondering.
Again, I guess I'm confused back with Ms. Morgan said, the difference between priorities and action plans. I mean, having, telling us how to implement things versus priorities, priorities are our objectives.
Exactly.
And I don't know how we have a, how that can be articulated at the district, you know, in the trenches, how they can.
Well, I think that if a priority is to improve
Graduation.
Graduation rate, or teacher retention, teacher recruitment and retention, okay. How does that happen? You know what I mean? There's more to it than that, we say that, that's our priority, okay. Then how does everyone involved who has to make that happen, do, you know, how do they, how can they be involved at a level where they can be instrumental and successful in meeting the goal of the priority? Or maybe I'm taking it too deep.
Maybe a point of clarification from that comment? It sounds to me like it's an opportunity to collaborate on the accomplishment of priorities, not the setting of priorities.
Right.
Is that, is that where there was a little confusion? It's not that they?
Right.
Yeah.
And, right, so maybe that was the word that was missing between the one and priorities.
So within those areas, within those five identified areas or suggestions, let's give the superintendent some direction around top priorities. Which do you see as the top priority or two? Yes, ma'am?
Well, I'll still come back to, you know, issues of concern is district staff and school administrators, this feedback loop. Are we getting the kind of feedback about what's standing in the way of teachers, what's standing in the way of principals, what's standing in the way of resource people getting the job done? Maybe we are, I haven't seen it, but to me, that, you know, that's important.
Okay. Other thoughts? Agreement? Anything else from the other board members? Are we in agreement? Hearing nothing else, we'll go with that as the priority within that professional leadership area. So let's move on for a moment to the next section. We're going to move a little quicker here, just in on behalf of time, so we're looking at executive leadership here, we have a couple of strengths, we'll look at those for a moment. So maybe you pop over to the suggestions. There you go. Okay. There's not quite, there's Ms. Morgan. All right, so let's take a moment just quietly to review those, there's five. Six? Let's scroll back.
Yes, we'll go.
Five. See how quick I can get it, still keep them all in?
That's good.
And when you're done reading, I'll take a suggestion around top priority or priorities.
Are we in community or?
This is executive leadership, yes, ma'am.
Yep.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, we skipped order, sorry. Okay.
Could I make a suggestion?
Please.
The area that I'm probably, and our team is going to focus on the most here in the short term, is in the area of, that's covered by the first one, I believe, which is, you know, our funds, and not only using the Gibson report, but we also have to, we have to take a deep dive into our budget and budgetary practices. Mr. Blerton and Kelly Letcher reported to me this morning about, you know, they have, we have been working as a group of chiefs on this, and on our budget process, and making improvements, and to really stretching the dollars as far as we can. So what I asked them to do was to really take that deep dive and do some in-depth analysis as to our budget, and then report back to the chief so we can start making reductions in different areas across the board. We're going to have to become more efficient, and that is so that we can improve our compensation structure so we can address some of our most challenged schools, and also compensate teachers and principals to get the leadership and the instructional strength we need in our district and remain competitive in other areas as well. That is going to be a huge challenge. If you look at the economic forecast in the state of Florida, it looks pretty grim for the short haul, and therefore I think we have to plan accordingly while still, you know, maintaining that competitive edge. So tomorrow, we are meeting as a group of chiefs and also our operations executive bunch, crew, and we are going to start making some very, very difficult decisions. The only way to get there from here is to become even more efficient than we have in the past. Some things that we'll be taking a look at, we have to look at, you know, how much, our supply budgets, we have to look at our carryover dollars, we have to look at our staffing levels at our different schools. You've heard me mention paraprofessionals as just one, we have to look at transportation costs and proximity. And there's a whole litany of things that we have to go through, but I think in terms of executive leadership, the one area that I see covered here that is something that will be a large focus would be that first area. Of course, transparency, I do believe that we continue to work on our transparency, I think we have been more transparent. However, the one thing I have encountered as you get out there is, you can be as transparent as you possibly can be, but people haven't been communicated with, they don't have a knowledge of it, they don't know, like, you know, we were meeting with a commissioner one day, and kind of was, you know, making a little bit of a, you know, if I tried to get your budget, I'm sure that it wouldn't be available, or I'd have to go through all these mountains of requests to get to us, and, you know, the response was, no, it's available online. So most people don't know that, they don't know your audits are online, they don't know. And then when they read an audit, that's the other thing about audits, you know, understanding that audit in context with the entire state of Florida and what that means, like the FEFP audit, it's actually a pretty good audit. I mean, if you really look at it, stops comparatively, but then we don't communicate that out, so, you know, we don't have the appearance of being transparent. So anyway, I mean, that's where I think our focus will be in the short term.
Yeah, and I'm not, I was surprised to see that in the interim. I don't know who wrote it, but when I read that, I thought, that's what he's, that's what they're doing. Because, maybe it's because I'm on finance advisory, and this is all we talk about, but I know the efforts that are being made by staff across the board to, and I feel like aggressive plan is exactly what you're engaging in, so.
It's very aggressive.
So I think the other part of that is just that people get their information and their perceptions from the news and word of mouth, and it's not always accurate, and they are not aware that they can go on our website and get all of that information, that there's open public access to that. Because that's a conversation that I find myself infrequently, yeah, with people.
So maybe just increase communication around the work that's being done. What do you think about that?
Right.
Okay.
To back up a couple of years, do a better job telling the story, I mean, that's it, yeah.
But to that point, I think one of the things that we do have to is really is governance team, because, you know, we are going to receive pushback relative to this aggressive plan. The plan has to be aggressive in order for us to get to the compensation levels that we need and really drive resources to the schools that need those resources the most. This is something that I have not seen in my time, but when you look at the budgets, I think we have the capability to do this, but it's going to change, it's going to take a tremendous change, but you as a governance team, you know, we certainly need your support in helping communicate that message out there, because this will have an impact. I think ultimately it's going to have a very positive impact on this district, but it's going to take, it is shifting the culture.
Absolutely.
In other words, we're going to get a lot of pushback and a lot of complaints, and we need to understand where we're going and why we're doing it, and the bottom line is more money in classrooms for students.
Yeah, right, right.
It's no different than the academic change we just experienced. It's just not rational.
Right.
Well, it might be a little bit louder, though. I'm thinking what, as aggressive as this will be, I'm thinking it might be, it might be even louder.
Yeah, and it definitely impacts dollars versus, you know, behavior change, it's a pocketbook change, so, yeah.
Budget department is really having to teach people how to really truly budget their schools well. And to get every, to use every dollar that you have at your disposal in the current year so that you can, you know, do what we need to do for our kids.
Okay, so I'm hearing some consensus around our first area there as being the top priority. Okay, so let's, I'm just going to keep moving us forward a little faster here, but it's all good conversation, so I don't want to interrupt. Community leadership, these are the identified strengths across the interim assessment. So just take a moment and read. Let's send it to suggestions, and that's community leadership. There's one little one at the top there, we'll read, and then just scroll down, please. I believe there are six here, so let's take a look for just a moment, and then we'll make some recommendations around top priorities for the superintendent.
I feel like one and four go together. They're both, they both throw in advocacy, and this is getting into a little bit of our later discussion in this workshop, but in order for any change to take place that's meaningful for our students, it's going to require more involvement by our community members and our staff to understand what's going on.
At an unprecedented level, I mean, if we haven't learned anything through this tax initiative, is how little our public knows what impact our legislative, what's happening in Tallahassee, how that's impacting us, that most of it is without our control or approval, it's just, they're just doing it.
And you know what? You know, as we go out there and we encourage our staff to be more involved from an advocacy perspective, we hear some stuff we don't like, but that's the stuff we need to hear too. You know, it's not just about, this is what your leadership team has decided, now support it, it's a matter of ground up as well, and us hearing what's happening in the classrooms every day, and what's hearing what's happening in the buildings every day, and taking that feedback, and putting a legislative platform together that reflects that and addresses that as well. So as I get out there more, and I hear feedback from teachers and from staff, a lot of it's really good, but some of it's bad, and we need that, we need to hear that as well. So I feel like not only will it allow us to effectuate change, but it will, you know, at the state level, but it will allow us to address whatever concerns might be shared among staff. Am I making sense?
Yeah, and I think one example of that is the burdens we put on our first-year teachers as far as the courses and the tests and the general knowledge test. And what strikes me is so, I mean, the, you know, when we spoke to legislature, it was like they'd never heard of this, you know, and we're taking a very aggressive approach, but yet we have sixty-six other districts that have to be faced the exact same thing. And it's like, you know, that just kind of shows you how little school boards have really said, look, if we don't take, you know, get out there and really educate what's going on, both in our constituency and up in Tallahassee, we deserve this, you know.
One thing that we have just done recently is, you know, we are in the Alliance for Educational Leaders, which is comprised of the local university and college presidents and the local superintendents. So workforce development decided to pull funding from the alliance. So we had a decision to make whether to allow that to disband or to go ahead and pick it up and continue on. We decided that we would, you know, pick it up and continue on, very minimal cost, we're already contributing collectively. And what we will do, though, is we agreed as an organization that we are going to redirect our mission to be educational advocacy for this region and the state. That was something that I think pretty much resonated around the room. You know, it originally came from really my own concern about the relevancy of the alliance in the short term. It really hasn't gotten a lot accomplished since I've been in this role, and a lot of the things that they have done have been grant-related in Collier County that hasn't really benefited the other school districts. So I said, you know, we're going to continue, this is something that I really feel that we need to do as an organization, because we just, you know, I can tell you from going through this referendum piece, that an individual superintendent or board is easy to pick off, but collectively, I think there's strength around issues that we really share. And Dr. Martin, you know, who is very eloquent in his ability to speak, you know, jumped right in and said, you know, what should the Alliance for Educational Leaders be about? We should be providing leadership on all educational issues in this region. That is what we should be doing as an organization. So then, after we had that agreement, literally that decided collectively and by consensus that's going to be the mission, that some of the things that we want to take on would be this very issue of teacher shortages, certification, and so forth. So we're in the process of all of us putting our platforms in, and then we're going to have a discussion about narrowing that down, but that's one that's already percolated to the top.
Now is it five counties?
Well, Collier jumped out of it, and FSW jumped out, so Martin's going to call FSW and tell Albritton he needs to jump back in, so hopefully he will, you know, because I know that Dean Miller was part of what might have got them removed, so he's gone. So now FSW, we're hoping to get back on, in the fold. And then Scott Bass, who is the superintendent of Glades, is going to try to work with Charlotte County to get them back in, yeah.
So Miller is gone?
That's what I've been told.
Because I think that was a problem for the alliance and for this particular area.
Because I think that was a problem for the alliance and for this particular area. He was so focused on working with Collier that, okay.
Okay, so, thank you, Dr. Akin. So I hear advocacy around advocacy, education advocacy. Any other priorities within this subtopic? Okay, so that brings us to the very end of our comments. Is there anything else that needs to surface as a priority?
Not a priority, just a question. The response that I received from you via email today to the, to the interim evaluation, is that public via public records request? Like, how, how does that get made public?
There was just items in the, in one of the interim evaluations that I felt needed to be addressed. And, you know, so I put that information out there. I mean, there was, there was, there was information in there relative to audits. There's information in there relative to, like, the agreement with NAACP that I felt it would be good for all board members to have clarification around those issues. For example, NAACP, there was a comment, and I don't have the evaluation in front of me, but a comment relative to that complaint being something that should be attached to me personally or this administration. Well, the data that was used to file that complaint was actually from the thirteen fourteen and the fourteen fifteen school year. If you look at the complaint itself and you look at the annual reports. So those are things that need to be clarified. There was a question about, again, the east-south decision in the interim evaluation. I felt that needed clarification. So things like that, you know, one of the things that, that I've talked to more than one board member about is communications and being able to, you know, I want, all of you want to be, I think, made aware of, of, you know, current issues, and that sometimes can be a challenge. So part of it is to help, I think, answer some of those questions.
Okay, so our commitment is that we will provide you with the top priorities, that you're up to speed and aware of what we decided today, and then we will move forward and make sure that those priorities are covered. So thank you very much. We appreciate it.
Thank you. Next up is the Board Attorney Evaluation Instrument. You know what? I am without a moderator to do that. Oh, Jeff's here.
Hello.
Hello. Hello, and thank you for taking this on.
I love a good evaluation.
You're the king of evaluations.
So, how we got here was, we had a discussion or a directive to propose an update to the Board Attorney's Evaluation. And so we have two concepts worked up based on the few suggestions that we did get from board members so far. So what we're hoping to get today is which concept seems more fruitful, which one should we finish up and present a finished version to you? So what you have here are two ideas that are incomplete. This first idea, which is in shockingly small type, I apologize for that, is basically the existing evaluation with a few clarifications for language that no longer seems clear, and adding in a couple of the new items that were added to the job description just recently. So, yeah, the one I sent you had changes tracked. So you can see what, what went on there. The existing language that's unchanged is from the current eval, and anything that's marked in is new. Now, the, the new, the one new concept was the, the old eval had a five-point rating scale. We've been kind of going with four with all the other employees. The Board Attorney would be the last one in the district to use a five-point scale. So we thought, let's try a four, and see if, if you all like it. And the other was, there was no, no rubric language at all. It was just, you like it or you don't like it. So, one idea without going, you know, really deep into rubric writing, is to give two marks for each item, one for timeliness, one for quality of the service, and then to provide sort of a generic rubric for, for all of them. So we have a highly effective, effective, needs improvement, unsatisfactory scale that would apply to all the indicators, all the way across. And they're basically about, you know, is it timely? Is it good? And, and to give you some idea of, of how they're graded. The highly effective is written to be, you know, pretty spectacular performance, and the unsatisfactory is written to be a pretty grim performance. So it, it kind of lets you gauge where you think that the performance is. And there'd be, there'd be two, two ratings for each indicator. So for everything that you look at, marked for timeliness and for quality.
Is the procedure still for the Board Attorney the same with the superintendent, that the highest and lowest get removed and then?
I think we're deciding that now, aren't we?
Well, interestingly enough,
It's a great question.
Yeah, the board's policy does indicate that. However, Dr. McCullers and I always get into these in-depth discussions of whether or not certain things apply.
I'm always right.
And a lot of times he is right, almost all the time. And the language in the policy is not real clear whether that applies to both the superintendent and the Board Attorney. So my contract does not include that language. However, the board policy requires at least the superintendent's top and bottom score to be dropped. But it's not real clear in the policy whether it applies to both. Mr. Martin probably could answer that question, because he probably drafted the language of the policy. Want to answer that, Jeff?
You know, you interpret it now, so how do you think it, how would you interpret that?
I, I think it applies to both policies. I mean, both evaluations.
Well, can we clarify the language in the policy?
Yes, we can.
So why don't we just do that?
We have to go through, we're making to do that.
Yeah, that, I, I think some, some clarification to the policy would be an important follow-up with either concept that we have here. So do you have, do you have questions about this one, or should I look at the, the next one?
I, I like this one. The only thing, the only comment I would make is under exceptional.
On the, on the rubric itself?
Yeah, on the rubric, yeah. It's not so much about exceeding expectations. It's about anticipating consequences. Look, how can I put this? Particularly when it comes to the delegation and legislation, being able to arm the board members with anticipating what's gonna happen with the delegation, what's gonna happen with the legislature, so that we don't have to wait to see what they have to say. We're prepared to jump.
Proactively.
Proactively, thank you.
And that's why I like the second instrument better. Because the second instrument allows you to create a rubric for each category of evaluation to include things like that.
Yeah, I just felt, okay, so we get, yeah. I mean, I like the second one too, so I just.
Okay, so let's take a look. The, the second version is a lot less finished. It's truly conceptual. So I took another evaluation I did for another employee recently, and used it as the model. And so you see some placeholder things here that, that don't, that I'll have to go back and clean up, but so here's the basic, these pages don't work yet, but here's the idea. We would have four, four standards, or I think it's four. And then a four-point rubric for each. But in this concept, we would have to go through and write a specific rubric for each item. So you, so, as Ms. Patrica was just saying, you'd be able to include details of what you expect to see for each item. So it's a very, it's a much more specific instrument. And I've just got a couple examples in here for you. I think there's maybe two more back here. So, so you can kind of see how, how it plays out. Sometimes it gets to be redundant because really the issue is time. And so it's just, it's just another, it's just a repetition of how timely that thing was. And other times, it, it can be a lot more nuanced, like you were talking about anticipating a problem. This is probably better to capture that kind of, of change. And we can go either way. This one would, I suppose, have the advantage of being similar to the one you're using for the superintendent, remarkably similar, since I use the same template. And the other one would have, I guess, the benefit of being something that's, that's familiar.
Well, the other one didn't have the groovy comments in the comments about the gators on it. Do you not know that you put that in there?
Oh, yes, I did do that. Okay, so. All right, so. Thanks, everybody, okay.
We're laughing with you.
Yeah, okay, so, all right. Well, yes, I put placeholders in a lot of places, and sometimes. Sometimes I should edit them out.
You were having fun, and you were, yes.
Okay. We'll have to write standard descriptions when we get to it.
The comment I'd like to make about this, and, and this is really addressed to Ms. Patrica, is that you look at the world in black and white, and so when I look at the role of the attorney, it tends to be in black and white. To me, it's really hard to create rubrics that are highly effective, effective, needs improvement or unsatisfactory. I want to drop out needs improvement, because if you're not effective, frankly, when you're providing legal advice to the board, to me, that's unacceptable.
Well, I would agree, but the law is forever changing, so you don't, an issue may present itself that we're, that we're not prepared, and the Board Attorney is not prepared to address, and hindsight will show improvement was needed there. I agree with you, unsatisfactory is never acceptable. And, and before we get to an evaluation, hopefully that will have been addressed. But what this kind of a rubric does for me, and I, I know I'm not new anymore, but I learn something new every day in this job, is it tells me what the Board Attorney's role is. So if we can tie this to the job description, the various steps in the job description, then, then I think it gives me, as a board member, somebody asked me about onboarding. The evaluation should be included in onboarding. That should be the first thing I read as an on, incoming board member. It tells me this is what the staff attorney's job is, rather than me having to take two years to learn what his job is. It tells me what it is, and you know what? Rob, I like you, but if I didn't, how I feel about you doesn't matter here. And that's the, for me, that's the key is you look at the job they do, not whether they have terrible taste in football teams.
So, in the fir, the, the, the comments, or the statements in the first one, are they essentially replicated in the second one, but?
Not, they're sometimes, but not by design.
I just, I don't disagree with Ms. Patrica as far as the, the rubric, but when you're talking about four, specific, properly articulated, agreed upon by seven people, four for each one, and there's five or six in each category, this will be a career move. I mean, to get, the workshops here will be, and I'm just, I, I won't be here, so I'm just telling, but I'm just saying the amount, to do it right, to do it right, you're talking about, I mean, I think inherently prohibitive timeframe, because.
Didn't we do it with the soup?
No, no, not to that extent.
We had, we had the, we had templates that, from other districts that we've worked with. There's a lot of material.
This is completely new.
This is starting, it's asking Jeff to basically write the book on it, yeah.
And why, I think, I, I liked what you're thinking, and I like the, the end product, if it ever be, but I really think this would take the focus of the, in just my professional opinion, would take the focus of the board away from doing what we're supposed to be doing. And then we, we would really get in the weeds and doing something that I think would take a lot more time than if we went to the first one and allowed us to move to do what we need to do effectively without getting too, I mean, I know the ideal goal, because it definitely would help new people.
So then, if, if you took the first version and you have your performance indicators, could we allow then for a specific comments, if there was, like, for A three, you had a specific comment, could then that be added at the bottom?
Oh, sure, sure, sure.
To, to keep it more.
Or add in some, some key criteria.
Right, to keep it more concise, yet provide opportunity for the different board members to give their different, different opinions.
Absolutely.
There may be a compromise, some type of a key, key indicators per, per group, just put some key indicators to give people some, you know, concepts.
I, I hear what you're saying. We have two employees, and so to say that this gets us away from the work that we're supposed to be doing, all we have to do is evaluate two employees.
He's talking about the work of creating the instrument itself.
I understand, I understand, but if we don't do that work, who does? You know, like, that's our job. So, that's my last.
No, it's Jeff's job.
And he's a graduating senior.
There are more value, are there more valuable things you could be doing for the district?
I'm here to, to do what you, you need to do.
Well, Marion and Melissa, your thoughts?
I like number two better. I'm, I'm agreeing with Chris, but I understand what you're saying, and the other one just is a little more, this is confusing, that one's confusing. The other one was clear, this is.
See, I don't see the attorney's job as being as esoteric as the superintendent's job is. The attorney doesn't reach into as many places as the superintendent does. To me, his job is more concrete, and maybe it's because I think like he does, but to me, it's more whatever.
Okay, no, I mean, I, I'll work with whatever, and, no, really. I tend, you know, I tend to be more direct and to the point, and, and like it simple. However, if that would be helpful to other board members in understanding exactly what it is they're evaluating, yeah, I mean, and Jeff, do you have enough time in your senior year to finish this?
I can do whatever you need to do.
He's so agreeable.
Which one did you like? Well, actually, I, I would have to say that thinking about it in terms of an, as an instrument that educates people about what the job is, the second one is really the way that we probably need to go. And we'll just have to think of something special to do for Jeff when it's all done.
Yes, and Rob, what do you think?
Well, I, I, Ms. Morton's initial comment was where, where I was actually, I didn't have any inherent objection to the previous evaluation instrument, so.
Okay.
I, I think it's a unique situation when seven people are evaluating a lawyer, so to come up with an instrument that's gonna satisfy what's, what you're all trying to do, which I think is to try to help me do my job, is a difficult task. So the other instrument, I suspect, withstood the test of time. I mean, Mr. Martin was here a long time, so.
Well, it really did.
Okay.
I really hated it.
Oh, he didn't like it, okay.
No, I said I really hated it.
Yeah, no, so, so Jeff and I worked diligently on those changes to the, to the current document, along with the comments from Ms. Patrica and others, and but honestly, in the end, I don't think there's much difference, so I'm willing to. It's not up to me, it's up to you, and the quirky comments of Jeff in item two, or.
One, he had two comments in there.
But, so, I, I've been in this district thirteen years. It's always been interesting to be evaluated by non-lawyers. So, although this board currently has two lawyers, so it's kind of interesting in that respect, too. But, and that's okay. It's, it's just coming up with an instrument that satisfies everybody is difficult. It's, it's just coming up with an instrument that satisfies everybody is difficult.
Do, if we were to, let's look at the second instrument. If we look at the second instrument, are people, I mean, Jeff's going to start doing some really tough work. So, is what's in the second instrument essentially what we're looking for? I mean, I would hate to get him on the rubric when we haven't even agreed on what 1.0, 1.02, 1.03, and 1.04 are within the board performance and the, and the groovy, groovy ways.
This is all new. This is all new and why was placeholder and.
Yeah.
But it, it, it wasn't from complete scratch. We had far fewer examples we could locate. And we found some attorneys weren't eager to share. So, for whatever reason. But, so, it, it's, it's back to suggestions from, from board members and from the job description is really where we tried to draw from. So it's not.
And that's what I would suggest. I would suggest putting together, you know, standards and substandards based on the job description and then come back to us. Because I think that if you cover everything that's in that job description, you've got the, the skeleton that you need and then it's your brain that puts together the rubric.
So, you want me to try that then with option two? Is that, is that drift?
Right.
Do you want to see something?
Yeah. I, I would have to say probably not until December. We've got the board reorg to get through. I think, we have what, one meeting in December?
Yes, we have to decide that, but yes.
Yeah, that's true.
Yeah, right.
I mean, do you all feel that we need to move more quickly? I understand from a point of educating new board members that we would like to have something, but I'm not sure we can get it done in two weeks.
Right, and, and, right.
Onboarding, it does help.
Yeah, my only, my only concern is how long does Rob sit in this position without knowing how he's going to be evaluated? That, that's my concern.
Okay, well, six months, June.
April 15th, actually, is my evaluation's required to be done by.
Okay, but, but, and you're thinking an interim or are you thinking a?
Oh, but I don't know, does it matter? I mean, one or two in, in substance is still both going against, going against the job description. So that's not, he's not really flying by.
And there is a current instrument.
Yeah.
Right, right.
I mean, if you're asked to be, I'm good.
Okay. And so as long as it's aligned with the job description.
I would like to see it done before, but I think, I don't, you're awesome, Jeff, but I don't think you're Superman.
And, and I wouldn't want to rush into it because it kind of has to withstand the test of time and, and the board membership is a revolving door. So, you know, we could have a lot of different opinions. And so, if, if we're going to do a new instrument, I think we should allow him to do it correctly. And, yeah.
And maybe get it out, so whenever we know what our December meeting is, if you can get it out to board members a week before, so that they have an opportunity to look at it and are ready to talk about, that, that's always helpful.
Will do. Thank you.
I have two go-to-the-order items on the board attorney thing. Should I bring them up now or do you want me to wait until maybe?
Go ahead.
The two items are the level of discomfort I have with not having an attorney who can appropriately review contracts for content and determine what our exposure to liability is. Right now, we have a board attorney who can't, like, construction contracts in particular. We're hiring all of those out. So I'd like to have a discussion as a board regarding the cost effectiveness of hiring out versus bringing in another attorney for construction as we go into this next phase of growth in the district. So if we can schedule that. And then the second thing is, and this is just a crazy idea I had. Mr. Martin used to do the school board law minute where he talked about parliamentarian, preliminary procedure. I'm wondering if we shouldn't have like a, a school board policy minute? Because our job is as that of policymakers. And if, if he were constantly reviewing policies and giving, having us read the policies one at a time, then we might be able to determine whether changes are needed. And it would really just require a minute. If you give us the materials ahead of time and we review them, then we could ask questions.
Can I?
Please.
Okay. Regarding the second item, the first item, I'm all in favor of having that conversation. The second item, I actually have had the conversation with Brian Williams, the staff attorney. And we're going to have a new board in a few weeks. And I think most of you know this, that I have taught significantly in law school and college. And I teach education law. And I would never bore you with an entire year of education law. However, I think it may be helpful if I, if we put, we did some workshops where I taught a little bit of education law to the board relative to the constitutional requirements and really how we got here, local control, all of the issues that come up that are veiled or in other issues, but that really the foundation of what we do. And I mentioned this when I interviewed with you all, that I wanted to do training and be proactive. And that's my first thought about that. Doing the, the minute for policy, I'm all in favor of that. I have no problem with that. I just don't know how effective that can be in one minute. But I do want to get before you to try to do some of the other stuff. And I, and, and the minute is fine, but it's, it's your pleasure and our time is limited, so.
For me, I think the key is forcing us to read those policies.
To what, forcing to read them?
Forcing us to read those policies. And, I mean, forcing all of us, you included, to review them for legality and identifying potential changes. So you're right, the minute itself might not be helpful, but forcing that in front of us.
Got it.
Well, at least once a month, preferably at every meeting in a month would be.
Yeah, building in, we have to have a conversation, given how short our evening meetings are running now, about how we want to run our meetings and, you know, what, what, what kind of blocks of time we want to set aside for workshops and briefings and the regular meeting. And then building policy into that, obviously, policy, budget, and supervision. Those are our three responsibilities, so. But I think the new board should really talk about how it would be embedded. That, that would be my.
Okay.
But I also agree, you've, you've talked about Dr. Atkins going to a third attorney, but I know with the budget conversation you're having now, probably not prepared to tackle that. But.
Well, how much money?
But I liked your idea.
Go ahead, sorry.
I'm sorry.
No, no, you go.
I liked your idea about determining, you know, the difference in the cost to have someone on site all the time as to hire out contract.
Yeah, we have. We have looked at that and that's something we could do relatively easily, bring that back. I mean, we, we were reviewing those budgets in terms of, I know Dr. Pruitt was involved in that work, looking at how we use our outside counsel expenditures. And, and they're pretty significant.
And based on the project list, they may become significant.
Yeah, right.
I just, when I see approved as deformed, that leaves us as a board open to liability.
Can I comment on that though?
Yeah, go ahead.
You and I had that conversation and I, I, I delved into that issue further. And an attorney, a government attorney, uses that phrase to simply advise either Ms. Morgan currently and Dr. Atkins, that the attorney is saying it's okay to execute that agreement.
Right.
So, that's essentially what that means. That actual phrase has actually been litigated because lawyers have been sued over what that means. So I did some research and that's essentially what the courts have said it means. It doesn't create any liability for the attorney, but it essentially is you saying to your client, it's okay for you to execute this.
That means you reviewed it with, with.
To make sure of appropriate clauses and all that.
It's made me nervous, too. I mean, because I really, you know, I do, I do think that had we been in a situation related to Binyas Springs where we'd had Feather, that I don't think, I think we could have avoided a lot of that. And, and, you know, I think that our staff is obviously extra careful. We've got many more layers than we've ever had in the past. But, you know, it, it, you know, you need to, I want to make sure there's somebody that takes a number and, and compares it to the contract language. And, and there was some of that that hadn't, hadn't happened.
And that was really the, the experience that opened my eyes to the need for additional protection.
And I've had that, you know, I've had that conversation with him. I know that they have, you know, I don't, and I, I have a little bit level, better level comfort than I did initially. But I won't, you know, having gone through that experience before, it's always in the back of your mind. And when you see a big contract, I'm not an attorney. So you really want to make sure that somebody is, is protecting the district and making sure those contracts are, are written and executed in a way that they should be.
Yeah. All right, so future conversation.
Yep.
Please and thank you.
Okay. So, Rob, you're up. Our goal, I guess, today is to be able to bring forward the greater, the consortium's platform tonight as a.
Is it not the agenda?
No, we have to bring it forward as a.
Good cause?
Good cause.
Thank you, that's what I'm looking for.
Okay.
And then I don't know, Ms. Patrica, if we're supposed to do anything with respect to the Florida School Boards Association. So then the other part of this meeting is really about taking the two initiatives that Dr. Atkins and I have been able to speak with the delegation about and adding to that as part of our agenda for the year, other things like rollback.
SROs.
SROs, I mean, yeah, right. So the money asks.
Right.
So.
So, you have a number of documents that were attached to the agenda item. Ms. Morgan submitted another one, which I think was great. It is a list of things pared down into fewer words than the actual legislative priorities from the various organizations. I also provided you a couple of color-coded documents which have the explicit and priority descriptions for the Greater Florida Consortium of School Boards, the Florida School Board Association, and the Lee County School District are to, are on this document all the way back under critical shortage because they both deal with teacher projects, if you will, or teacher legislation. So.
No, I have this, I have that, GCS.
This could be a wide ra-, wide-ranging conversation or we could figure out a way to narrow this down. I will tell you, Ms. Green's out of the country, celebrating, I think, her 50th wedding anniversary. So she's not here today. And that's why she's not here. But I'm, I'm willing to facilitate this however you would like. But I, I think, I would just tell you that one of the things that I thought was of utmost importance was after Parkland, was to somehow get the legislature to make sure and ensure they continue to fund mental health and the safety officer. So, I mean, we can use that as a launching point or however you want to.
Well, let's do it, G.
Yeah, S C B.
Let's get that done because we want to get that as a good cause tonight. So let's start with that.
So I, I guess I have to ask Ms. Patrica, is there a desire, do they just want us to approve this entire thing?
Well, if, if we decide that something shouldn't be on there, it will be taken out for the entire consortium.
Okay.
And the only issue that I raised for Lee County's purposes was the trim notice. It said, their proposal was that we don't include an increase in trim notice if the increase was due to increase in property value. And I felt that was misleading. And I remember having this conversation with this board that it was misleading. So they rewrote it. So now the trim notice will delineate whether the taxes increase is due to an increase in millage rate or an increase from property assessment. And I felt that that was true and honest. And otherwise, I mean, I had sent it out to you before our meeting and not much changed after. And I'm comfortable with what's in there, approving it. And I'm sure you guys have all read it. Is there anything in there that you guys want pulled?
Just, just for the record, I mean, the, our delegate, you know, our, our consortium does a whole works really hard on this to get that so it can be bought by all, you know, by all of the concerned. I mean, it's a very, you know, the process is, because any one person can derail it. So they work very, very hard to make it work. I was appreciative that they agreed to the language changes to make it more fair for us.
There was like five different, like, one through five different iterations before we settled on that, but whatever.
So then this is the total list of priorities or this is the list like they usually do with the primary priorities and then the list of additional?
Right, they have their priority issues and then they have their additional issues.
So then is the color coding indicative of that?
No, it's not. I didn't. Red shape between priority.
So if you look here, it's the ones at the top.
Okay.
The funding, capital outlay funding, student safety and mental health. And then everything below that, the priority issues.
Yeah, I'm with it.
Can I ask a question about that? Because you're in the know because you were there. What is the, what is the logic behind having the priority issues and then other issues?
It's just their primary focus is going to be.
Primary issues. Okay, you get too much and it gets diluted so that everybody, everybody speaks to those three.
Right. I think the idea is that you sell the priorities, but the legislators need to know that there are other issues. And if something comes up in legislation, we already have a position on it.
Right.
And we're ready to, yeah.
And historically, they'll carry those along each year.
We need too much, is the problem.
Yeah.
What's that?
We need too much. And you can't walk in and ask for all of it.
And I think.
Their eyes start to get glassy. If you have me on three, they start, they start their eyes rolling back in their head and they turn off. So you learn that, get it hard with three and just keep the other ones in your pocket. They're still conscious after three.
So we're all set on Greater Florida?
And I don't mean that in a bad way, but they got so much on their plate, you know, just education.
Okay.
So you have a consensus?
Yeah, so needs to go on is.
So we have Susan, we're going to.
Thank you.
She's happy to do that.
I'm sure she is. And then apropos of what Steve was just saying, I think when we talk about our initiatives, the first thing we want to talk about is we want to do a single pager like the consortium does, FSBA does, so that we are limited in our focus. Or do we want to go, my preference is to talk about what are the three or four most important on this list and then talk about incorporating it. But Chris has a lot of good stuff in here that's not, I don't know if we can bring it into some of the other categories.
Well, what I've, what I've learned, and Dr. Carlin can, can probably attest to this. We've done, as a district, 250 presentations on the Hefney, the change for change. And what I've learned out there is that there is a complete and total lack of understanding of what we do. I can also tell you, in the ones I've done, no member of our state delegation has been there. I know that invitations have been made to them throughout, throughout all of the presentations. How long have we been doing them?
Since Valjean was.
Invitations have come to them from many different sources to join us at one of these in order for them to sort of counter what we say the need is. And they've been busy the entire time. Over the past two years, information that I've been able to gather about our state delegation is that with the exception of a special event here or there in our schools, they haven't toured our schools. So I feel that it's our responsibility, like Pinellas, to educate them on what's happening. And that's the first step. We educate our legislative delegation, we invite them into the district, and we tell them what our needs are in a broad-based manner. And then we educate our foundation. And then, instead of change for change, we put together a presentation and we continue to go out to the public. And we continue to help them understand what our needs are. Because there's so much misinformation out there. Greg Blerton was at Finance Advisory last week and he educated, he educated Finance Advisory on required local effort and the rollback of the required local effort and F E F P. And the, what is it, 32-step, 27-step process that is F E F P. And they were stunned. And that's our Finance Advisory Committee. So there's, in order for us to effectuate the change that we need to change, I'm sorry, I know I've said it before, a $300,000 ask is not what I was elected to do. A $300,000 ask doesn't change the condition of students in our classrooms. We need a big change.
Grow your own.
Grow your own.
And here's something, and I don't know where to fit this in, because we're in a, a kind of a unique situation with a referendum that's coming. However, if the referendum is not successful, then we still have to deal with this issue. And so one of the things that, that we have been working on is an alternative ask. And that alternative ask goes at public education capital outlay dollars, you know, and the high-growth district capital outlay assistance grant program. But that program has to be literally rewritten because districts today have to have levied, you know, the, would have had to. the, would have had to have a sales referendum and been successful. We're proposing, we're looking at proposing something that gets more at the heart of the issue, and that is capacity. We are, we are at capacity or utilization rate that is, you know, that is, I think, first or second in the entire state of Florida. So that should be in there, about fish capacity. We also look at the impact fees. If impact fees is less than 50%, you know, we've got to get the dollars from somewhere else there as well. So looking at, and looking at our projected growth, we are one of six districts that are growing faster. So the state does not address this issue in statute, it just doesn't. And if you've got the rest of the state, that's why we all know they've been resistant to going to 2.0 mil because the rest of the state doesn't need that. In fact, Collier County is able to really capitalize on their lack of need for capital dollars by putting it into operation. We have a unique need, and I think we need statutory assistance if we can't get something done locally, because the kids still have to have seats. So where does that come in? Because you see, if we don't, if we have, if we're successful, which would be, you know, I think wonderful from our capital funding perspective, that we're successful, we may not need this. However, if we're not, we need that, we have to have this.
My question to you, Dr. Atkins, and on this board, because it goes back to what Dr. Atkins articulated, and the reason why we couldn't get any traction or support from our delegation or anybody else is nobody needs it but us. So trying to get a bill through the House and Senate, you've got to have a driver. You've got to have an economic driver, or you've got to have enough impetus of having enough areas that want it that you have other people signing on. We don't have any, any other dogs in the hunt, we're it. So whether it's the tax initiative, you know, our own, you know, to me, I think we got left high and dry by our own delegation by shooting against something. So now we go to them and we ask them for help, and they go, you know, we don't have any support. Well, then you shouldn't have shot us in the, you know, in the back when we're trying to get the problem solved locally. You know, we couldn't problem solve locally, now we come to the delegation and you have to carry the water. But they won't, because even if they wanted to, they couldn't. So I don't know what, how do we get, you know, how do you get more districts to want to do that legislatively?
Because, you know, you take Florida Gulf Coast University, they can go to the delegation and get them to build a building. You know, I mean, literally, and I think they're going to go back. We were told the priority of Florida Gulf Coast University is, while they want to support us on the innovation school, right now they need to finish their building this, so they're going to go and ask for capital dollars. They've asked for capital dollars in the past, and they've been successful. And I don't understand why is it that the saying doesn't hold true for a growing school district.
Right.
Well, it doesn't support the party platform of no new taxes. And, and I think that there has to be a recognition, a public recognition that our current state delegation is serving the party, not the people that they were elected to represent. And, and there's also, behind the scenes, everybody tells me, leadership decides what happens in Tallahassee. Leadership decides, leadership decides, right? Everybody's shaking their head, yes, leadership decides. The public doesn't know that, and it's our job to get the word out to the public. We have built a base of support in the business community, with parents, with teachers, with staff, through this half penny referendum push. And we need to continue to educate them, we need to broaden the base of education we're providing to them about our system, and they need to continue to advocate for us. And I don't see us doing that, walking into a room, you were there, I was there, where one of our state senators says to us, there are areas where we agree and areas where we don't, we're not discussing the items we don't agree on. They can't dictate the topics that are important to our students, just because it's not politically popular for them. You know, we, we have real needs here. And, and I feel like we need to start to take a stand as a school board and do what we were elected to do, which is advocate for children, instead of being afraid tucking our tail between our legs and saying, well, they don't want to talk about it, so we won't. Well, that doesn't help kids.
Have we ever thought about talking to the legislators and having them put, appoint someone on our advisory, giving them a little power of having them on our advisory, like our finance? Let them appoint someone. We appoint someone, but why, why not give them, I mean, we've got to, we've got to build the relationship. We've got to bring them in. How do we do it? By giving them a voice at the table, at our, at our finance advisory, start there. I don't know, I just, I'm just sitting here thinking, that's what...
I don't disagree, I don't...
Because if you don't bring them in, they, they feel like they're not being told. So if we don't, if we bring them in, they're there. And that's just my...
I don't know how they can feel that they're not being told when you ask them for meetings and they don't respond.
I'm just saying.
And that's where the public needs to be made aware, I'm sorry.
So I mean, two conversations going here. One is about what our priorities are going to be, and the other is about how we're going to proceed once we've set our priorities. So where do we want to go first? Set priorities, or do you want to talk about how we're going to advocate?
Well, I think first we should set the priorities.
Well, I mean, if we're just going to sit down with individual, see, to me, you can't have one conversation with the other. If we're just going to sit and continue to have meetings and ask for $300,000 and not invite them to the table en masse and continue to educate the community, then those two priorities is really all we do.
Well, that's, that's what we are talking about, but we also have to have a formal platform.
Right, and historically, we have invited them, we have hosted events.
Now we're talking about again.
No, I know, and I'm sorry, I know, I'm just saying, but...
Because Dr. Atkins...
So we need to have a hook that'll get them to respond and say, okay, yes, we'll send so-and-so.
And if they don't, then...
Then they don't, again.
But that's...
So we're, we're talking priorities. Okay, so, you know, and that, so I raised the question because the outcome of a referendum does not take away that priority for us, in my opinion. And so I really believe that regardless, somehow, I would like to get your feedback on how do I insert it? Or, we'll prepare this.
Right.
Okay? But at some point, if we're not successful, this, I think, should become a priority, whether we believe it's successful or not.
But even if it is successful, I mean, we have created a local revenue stream that doesn't negate the, the overreaching problem at the state level. There is no state statute that addresses growth in the state of Florida. There is a deficiency in our statutory structure, there's a hole. And like you said, the one grand hole that you have to have, we have to get past a tax before even eligible for... Well, that's not a fix, you know, that's, that's a, that's, you know, so maybe the priority should be targeting that, what they feel is the fix, and show how the fallacies of that, and to fix it so that the language more reflects how to properly... Because again, they want to run by data. If they just show that, that, that's not the proper statutory language, in other words, rather than trying to reinvent the wheel, let's try to take what's currently there and get it modified so it fits our need.
Didn't, didn't we do that last year, and it was only going to bring in like five million extra dollars?
Well, that's because we wrote it that way.
Right.
I think, I think that what we're trying to do now, I've asked Mr. Blerton to look at, you know, different ways of writing that so it generates enough revenue to make it more sizable. So he's working on that, he's going to get it to Rob, I think.
Well, Mr. Moore's worked on a significant part of it.
Yeah.
So I'm looking at it here. I think Mr. Toiber's comment is well-taken, though, there's strength in numbers. So how many other districts would we get to fall into this?
Right, you had five, you said, or whatever.
Well, there was, I think, six last year that would have fallen into it. If we craft the language or amend the language in the statute, it's 1013738, which already exists, how many can you bring in underneath that umbrella that then you have a strength in numbers advocacy movement to do this? But then it dilutes the funds to some extent, so...
And tweaking language, I think, is a different approach, is not a head-on approach.
And that's what we were told, that's what we were told, and that's when Mr. Sarah was here. But we were told, amending a statute versus creating a brand-new one is probably an easier thing to do.
Greg, Dr. Atkins, do you think that would be a wise approach?
Not if it doesn't generate the revenue we need. You know, the state, the state, I mean, I understand what Carol's saying, you know, I mean, but the problem was, the way the formula was written last year really didn't provide us enough revenue to really make a difference. And I just don't understand why, if you have a district that's growing like this, I mean, we did. We had PICO dollars back a decade ago. We, they allocated dollars to help the, to save our children or save our classrooms where they did the class size amendment, which decreased capacity across the entire state, and they were able to allocate PICO dollars. I don't see any reason why the state could not channel PICO dollars toward a school district that has a specific need, like they do with a university. And I understand that ask is easier, you know, to amend the statute, I get that, but I think that, I don't understand why a state can't come up with a formula that works for a district that's growing at 15... We've got, we've had 1,500 go-ups since the beginning of this school year, and we're only in October. We'll probably tip 2,000 this year, you know, and there's got to be another solution from the state. So, you know, if, if just tweak is not, tweak's not going to get it done for us.
But can't we change that language and change the formula computations as well?
That's what, that's what we're looking to try to do.
Okay.
So it, so you think you can get the formula to the point where it will bring in meaningful revenue?
That's the goal this year, yes.
Okay, so then how about if we do that, or they support a local solution? Because right now they're not.
Right.
Either they push legislation through that's going to provide us with the capital revenue that we need, or they support our solution, which is half penny.
How can they support our solution?
By not writing editorials in the newspaper that it's filled with misinformation and complete falsehoods.
How many campaigns do you guys, oh, you gotta be quiet? How are we going to do that pragmatically?
I think you make the, you make the ask, you have to make the ask. And, and you go, you go to the, I mean, part of the point of a legislative platform is to go to the public and to go to our advisory committees and say, this is what we're asking of our legislators, we're asking them to do this or this. And if they don't hold up their end of the bargain, then, then we hold them responsible, right?
You do have to get a sponsor. I mean, that is, so you have to sell something to a member of your local delegation, unless you're going to go statewide to get a sponsor. That's where Carol comes in, obviously. And last year, you know, we did have a sponsor for both of our bills, although the second one, the high-growth capital outlay didn't go anywhere. But, so that's half the battle. I, I did hear what Dr. Atkins said, and, you know, I mean, I agree in some respects. I mean, enough is enough, let's just go for it and draft a legislation that is going to provide us meaningful dollars. I mean, the other tactics that we've tried in my 13 years here haven't been very successful, so... But there is structure within the system we live in that we have to work in. So the ask is significant.
We have, we have to make the ask, we have to be in a position when people say to us, okay, the sales tax didn't pass, what's your remedy? And you say, one remedy is to get the state, our delegation, to support this particular piece of legislation.
Right.
So I think we do have to have it out there, whether the chances are good or bad. We have to put it out there, we have, the public has to see that there's a state responsibility and a local responsibility. And if the local responsibility doesn't carry it, you've got to go back to the state and have to see what the options, so... I'm, I'm fine with you all. Are we all, am I the last one to opine on this? Mary, have you said anything?
No, I haven't, I haven't said anything, but I, I would say go for it, because we have a specific need. It's not being addressed or met any other way, so really, what have we got to lose at this point? So I really...
Sorry, little red Corvette just went through my head. What have I got, sorry, sorry.
Lisa. I agree.
She got that.
If you don't ask, I mean, I agree with what you said. If you don't ask, then, then we're at...
Right.
So staff, the direction then would be for staff to work on something?
Which, which we are.
Yeah.
Okay.
I just...
Okay.
So when do we do this?
What's that?
When do we do this?
Well, I think if you're going to add it to your platform, which I think I'm hearing, I think that needs to be done probably...
Soon.
Soon.
Yeah, because meetings start in November.
Right, right, so right following the election?
What's that?
Right following the election?
It could be the night of the 20th, I mean, it could be put on the agenda that night.
I mean, because this is one of the things Chris has always brought up, that we're always behind the eight ball when it comes to doing the legislation.
Right, right.
And we're, that was a day late and a dollar short.
Well, I think the 20th is after the poke, is, you know, right after the election, you'll, you'll know whether it's time to, you know, we have to be, have the, lock and load the next, next round in the chamber.
Yeah, we'll be, we'll be ready.
Okay.
All right.
Is there any other priority the board wishes to put on their platform relative to, go ahead?
Chris raised the SRO thing, and I think that's important because that is, we need to carry this for the city councils and the county who are, you know, paying with us. So I think we need to be leading that charge.
If Amendment 1 passes...
Yeah. We're screwed.
We're screwed.
Oh, oh, yeah, I mean, you're fighting dollars.
I don't, I don't have, I don't have any...
You have the two-third one?
Um, no, that's the, um, the Homestead exemption.
Oh, yeah.
I've already...
Doesn't affect us, but it takes money away from us.
Right, I understand.
It does impact us to the extent that there's less money going into the general funds, so then they can advocate less education.
Exactly.
So, I, while we're on the subject, I, I can't, unless, unless somebody, law enforcement officers can convince me otherwise, I can't, I can't have anything other than an SRO in our schools. I just can't have an unvetted program in our schools. So we're looking at cutting elsewhere if the municipalities and the county won't continue to step up with their 50%. And again, I think that that's something that our state delegation needs to be educated on. I don't think that they, you know, I hear this hybrid thing, where we're going to have some guardians and some SROs. How do you make the choice? I've heard you talk about a hybrid thing, how do you...
How do districts do it? I, I want to hear how they're doing, that's all I want to know.
Well, they've got guardians in some schools and SROs in other schools, and I don't know how, how you make that quality decision about which students' lives are appropriate to be guarded by police officers and which ones are armed guards at the door, like, how, I don't even know.
With the military, some of the military people are way far, you know, trained, the training is more extensive than some retired police officers that'll come back and do it.
And a lot of our police officers are retired military.
Right.
And so, I mean, we have one district at least that has armed staff. So, I mean, how do you make that choice? But when it comes to, to safety, you know, how do you skip? And how do you then specify exactly what are the requirements for the guardians? You know, do you say it's someone with military training?
I thought that was criteria that had to be meet, not for that, I just don't...
They have to know a significant amount of training.
There is, correct me if I'm wrong.
But it's a small amount compared to law enforcement.
There's no, the criteria they set in the state, as far as what the guardians have to be, but there's no hold harmless for the district. In other words, if we choose that program over the other, and somebody were, you know, worst-case scenario, someone were to get shot in, in a school where we chose, we have a guardian versus an SRO, wouldn't we be liable for saying, why didn't we pick the higher threshold of, I mean, wouldn't we have that legal liability?
At least by the community.
But how is that any different than we've had SROs at the high schools and we didn't have them at elementary? How is that any different?
They're not our employees, SROs aren't.
No, you just say that if somebody got shot at a middle school versus a high school.
High schoolers are more valuable than our elementary school?
No, no.
No, but a law was not strict on that. But now we don't have that problem, because now it's required.
But that's kind of what we're saying guardian, I mean, I think that's what Chris is saying, you know, is a guardian program, I mean, which school is going to get guardian and which one's going to get an SRO? That's, I mean, that's essentially the same kind of, that's what I'm trying to say.
I think we just need to agree on where we are with the SROs. No, 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 that's okay, I just think we need to agree. And if we don't all agree, that's okay, we go with the consensus.
So there's two proposals or, or platform items from GFCSB and FSBA on this issue. Let me just read them to you and see if, um, if you're looking at the joint list with the colors, that's, it's on page three. So GFCSB's, the Greater Consortium says redirect any unused Aaron-Feist guardian program funds available to school districts who would like to spend it as required by the safe schools allocation instead of on school guardians.
Isn't it too late for that?
And then, well, I, I think, yes, I didn't understand why they had that as.
It's too late for that, that's what they've done.
I think it could say, any Aaron-Feist guardian program funds that are not spent on guardians shall be permitted to be used for the safety officers a district chooses, like SROs. So we'd have to ask for a change in the, the current way of, the way they're funding this.
Well, is it, is there even a current way they're funding it? Because it was a one-time allocation of funds, so why not ask for what we want instead of basing it on what we had last year?
And then the other one was provide school districts with local flexibility and increase recurring operational funds to implement local safe school initiatives and hire at least one law enforcement officer, school safety officer, annual guardian at each school. And that was FSBA's.
My, my question is that the FSBA and consortium both have it as their platforms. I thought we were talking about things because again, there's power numbers, so that, that topic should be delegated to where we have consensus of a larger power. You know, our consortium has lots more clout to take that up as a, as a consortium idea that we need to have issues that are, that are more unique and, you know, particular to us as our own platform. Isn't that what, or you thought we were?
Generally, that's the case, but I'm, I would argue for this just because of our political partners, that, that we need to be visible locally.
Oh, because of the, the position of our local delegation?
Right.
Well, and what our communities have done to really step up to play, plate on this one, I think they have, they have.
They're expecting us.
They have done a commendable job, uh, City of Cape Corals, uh, Sanibel and Fort Myers, as, as well as the Sheriff's Department stepping up. That has not always been the case in some of the other communities.
I guess.
So I think we increase total funds for the safe schools allocation to fully fund school resource officers in every school, period. No end or guardians, no.
You ask for it.
And I will tell you, I mean, at this point, it's over forty schools this year, and that's, that's typically one of the things I dip into is how's your SRO going? It, it's, I am getting so much positive feedback from, usually I go meet the SRO and I get feedback from the SRO and I get feedback from the school principal, I see it, I see the interaction going on, and these are places where they haven't, you know, these elementary schools where they haven't had that type of, of interaction, and they do, they're doing more than just, you know, the guarding the school. I mean, there's a lot more, they're really, I mean, you talk, you can see relationships being built. Uh, they're becoming a, a real viable member of the staff.
And it really is a, a community safety function, right? And you talked about, um, former military, former military doesn't have seven hundred plus hours of law enforcement training, nor do they have the additional training to work with adolescents, right? I'm, I'm sorry.
No, no, I'm not, I'm not, I'm not, I'm just saying, I think we've settled it, so let's move on.
Okay.
Yeah, good point.
We have.
All right, so we've got the, as far as I understand it, we have the high-growth legislation and increased safe school allocation to provide for a school, to fully fund a school resource officer in every school.
Correct.
Any others?
Teacher pay?
Well, teacher pay is a function of operational funding, period, right?
Yeah.
Um, do you wanna say something about operational funding? That's really, that's really a state and a consortium matter. We could do our top four priorities, which we've just sealed, and then add other priorities so that we're doing what the consortium does, which is if these things come up, this is our position. Um, it's not the ones that we are literally in their face for, but we.
I, I think the two, and again, I don't mean to sound trite, but, you know, to me, we can't put enough emphasis on those two. Anything else, I think, you know, the, we, operational funding, like you said, everybody knows and everybody's gonna be asking for it, but those two specifically deal with our two issues that are the hottest topics that right now that our district is dealing with.
I don't see how asking for three hundred thousand dollars for a grow your own program solves our problem.
That's one of the two.
That's one of the four, so to prioritize that.
We were talking about these two today, they've been talking about.
Oh, oh, oh.
You were talking about?
I was talking about the two we were talking about.
Yeah.
She's, she's talking about one of the four.
Oh.
So to, to not include base student allocation as a primary ask of the legislature doesn't solve our problems. Three hundred thousand dollars for grow your own, how many, how many teachers are we losing every year? How many teachers do we need every year? If we can't improve teacher pay and be competitive across the state, that's a Band-Aid, that is not a solution.
Aren't we looking for in our particular ask, when you talk about three hundred thousand dollars, it may be small, but we're looking for what our delegation, this is for what we're asking our delegation to do for us.
Right. Yeah, and I'm asking my delegation to increase funding for education in the state of Florida.
You're, you're, you're asking small fish to go and, and, you know, you're just asking for something that just inherently they just can't do. They just can't, they just can't pragmatically, systemically, inherently can't go to the, to the, to the powers that be, even though some of them are high-ranking officials and all due respect. They don't call the shots, and you're asking for a paradigm shift in Tallahassee based on a delegation ask. None of, none of our delegation are strong enough, willing enough, and politically brave enough to, to do that. And I think it's, it's, you're, you're, you're trying to teach a pig to sing. All you're doing is just irritating the pig and wasting your time.
Well, let me, let me just make, throw something out, though. We've talked about using the, um, SROs as, as a reflection of a community need. Um, why wouldn't we talk about salaries as, um, a way of showing our staff that we recognize?
You know, the, um, the Florida School Finance Officers Association had something in terms of a recommendation to the pre-K to twelve educational budget, which was increasing, uh, teachers' salaries by redirecting, um, that, that best and brightest scholarship money, that's two hundred and thirty-three million dollars.
Yeah, really.
And, um, and I was looking at if they were addressing the rollback rate. They were talking specifically maintaining the current required local effort. Okay, so, so you're not saying, don't roll it back, maintain required local effort, allow us to reap the benefits of increased property values while redirecting best and brightest scholarship dollars that would put, that would infuse dollars into teacher salaries and direct it there.
Now, that's something different, rather than going out there and asking for more money, you're saying our platform position would be adopt the recommendation of a bigger.
Florida School Finance, yeah.
People, bigger and brighter than us, you know, supposedly.
Okay, but I, I want us to get away from the thought process that we can't change this. I want us to stop thinking in terms of, this is how it happens in Tallahassee, so we're not gonna ask for it. We need to get away from that because if we go to our.
I didn't say that, Chris, what I'm saying is, if you, only two things change Tallahassee.
Right.
Money or votes.
Right.
So you have to have a lot of either, okay? You can't go up there running at a storm by yourself and expect to have change. The consortium, we are the largest voting block in the state of Florida. We have the, all the, the, the entire Gulf Coast consortium, go forward with something, we can change votes. If we really stood up in that whole group, we control more than fifty percent of the voting block in the state of Florida. That's where that, that's where you can get that water, that's the bucket.
I understand that, but the, the consortium is not building an army. And, and this is why I find it difficult to have the conversation about what's our, what are our priorities gonna be without understanding how we're going to approach our delegation on it, because my point is, we continue to educate the public, we continue to build that voting block, we continue to get our, our community involved. This half penny sales tax has, has got us a lot of supporters that we didn't have before. So we continue to reach and bring those supporters in in terms of money, in the form of business leaders, and in terms of voters from our staff and our families, and.
We can philosophically agree and disagree, and I guess that's for this board, 'cause I won't be on there, but, but to me, to have, to, to continue to yip like a dog ends up irritating people and then you turn them off to other things that we probably could achieve.
I don't wanna, I don't wanna yip, I wanna maul.
But you don't have the, you just, you're not big enough, and so.
You're right, I'm not, but we are.
No, we are not, and realistically, the consortium is. So if we take a concerted effort, this board gets consortium off the, off the mark and gets that group to mass, but this group in Lee County in and of itself, if you had everybody in Lee County emblazoned and empowered, our delegation is just, is not strong enough to make a difference in Tallahassee, they're just not. And so if you don't get Collier and, and Charlotte to, all to get together, you, you, as powerful as we could be, still won't change the wind. And that's just my reality, now, you board can, can differ, but I think, I don't, I don't think your passion's misplaced, but I think if you use that passion to get a consortium where you've got some big, we have a big hammer in that consortium, I think this board should move that consortium on those topics. But on smaller ones where we can get enough people to go, okay, I really don't have to, you know, it's a difference between a contribution and a sacrifice, you know? Chickens give the contribution and pig makes the sacrifice. If a delegate, if a delegate just has to make a contribution, okay, something like our three hundred thousand dollars, they can get behind that because they really don't have to give all of their political moxie for something that's really not getting them anywhere. What you're asking for is, you're asking for people that don't have a dog in the hunt to give all their chits on something that is not gonna benefit them or their constituents politically. I just don't think it's gonna happen.
And you, you just brought it full circle, where everybody tells me what the problem is in Tallahassee, but nobody's willing to do a damn thing about it.
Well, you're talking about doing something about it, which is you're talking about starting an advocacy movement locally. That's what your whole plan is about.
Right.
But I sort of feel like we need to, we need to know what we're advocating for before we talk about the plan, so, I, we, we absolutely hear you. I think the question right now is, with respect to teacher salaries, do we want to do big picture as, as Chris is suggesting, or do we want to consider piggybacking with, um, the financial officers, the, um, suggestion that Dr. Atkins brought forward? It's sort of a.
Getting us there slowly, you know, and I mean, that's a chunk. If we can get Bright Futures moved over, that's money that we should have had anyway, you know, you know, the, the next stop is Lotterie, you know, I mean, one, one pocket, but that gives us, not only does it give us, because your idea is, we need more money, this actually gives, we want more money, we got more people behind it, and we actually, they actually have a plan. Those are concerted things that they could go, okay, they're doing that.
Those two, two pieces, now, the one is redirecting the best and the brightest, the other is contingent on whatever our increase in property value, which I know that we're reaching a point where that, that may start to be leveling off. Um, you know, that's, that's the concern there. But, uh, at least where you're not looking at a rollback rate and then taking the required local effort and rolling it back. Because if you think about how better off we would be if they hadn't rolled us back as far.
They actually wouldn't be on.
Yeah, two years, you know?
Twice, yeah. The rollback rate, we still would have been seven, further ahead than we are.
Let me ask you this, from an activist advocacy point of view, how do you talk to the public and, and about where the money for teacher salaries comes from?
Explain to them that our hands are tied in terms of the amount of money we can bring in for teacher raises each year.
Okay, well then, how is that advocacy?
It's explaining to the public what's happening so that they can join us. The public doesn't, this is so complicated, this is so, so I'm two years on the board, like I said, I'm, I'm learning new things every day. The public does not understand our funding formula. The public thinks, can I tell you how many times I've heard, you have an increasing tax base and, and property taxes are increasing in value, you get just as much money as everybody else does, make do with what you have. They don't understand, they don't understand.
The state also took in more revenue by, I think, four percent the past at least two, probably three years.
Right.
And then they returned to us one point three nine percent or less than that. And meanwhile, if you start looking at the, the teacher dollar and, and inflation, you know, teachers are making less as a result of these type of policy decisions today than they were probably five years ago.
Yeah.
Uh, so, you know, that, that's something the public doesn't understand.
I think, forgive me if you feel otherwise, however, I do think the public understands per pupil funding. When, when they hear that phrase, Florida's forty-eighth, or, I think, so what the consortium and FSBA have done is asked for an increase in the base student allocation by a percentage. So FSBA has asked for three percent and the consortium's asked for five percent. So I think that's a little more understandable for the public than getting into the formula and, and the allocations that way.
What we did back in the day, we were, you know, when we were forty-eighth and forty, we said, just, we don't even wanna be in the top half, we said, just put us in the third quartile, you know, relatively to other states, you know, and, you know, that, that's what, you know, and that's something people can put their, put their heads around.
Or just put us to where we would be if we had kept pace with inflation since two thousand and seven. That would be like a thousand dollar increase per student, imagine that. Where do we stand on the, um, FEAs lawsuit on best and brightest? Do you know, I mean, not where do we stand, where does that lawsuit stand?
Yeah, I, I just read something about that a week or so ago, and I don't wanna misstate it off the top of my head, so I, I can update you all on that, I'll send you it, yeah. I don't know if briefs were due or something was happening.
Will that decision be made by the new court? Is it going to the Supreme Court or is it appellate?
No, it's not at the Supreme Court yet.
So it's still at the appellate level, or, or has it even been?
It's at the trial court level.
Yeah, is that the trial?
Right.
That's way old case, isn't it?
Yeah.
Hasn't it been going on the whole time I've been here?
Probably.
So I'm thinking it's almost four thirty, we have, we have the walk at five. We all need a break before we go into the meeting tonight. So I think Chris even suggested in her advocacy piece that we bring this back on the thirteenth if we weren't able to get through it today. Um, I think we've made a lot of progress on the issues. I think on the thirteenth, Carol will be here. Let's, um, let's plan to put some time into a workshop to do the advocacy piece.
Well, I thi, I think that if we wait until the thirteenth and then we invite our state delegation in at the beginning of December, the answer is gonna be no. I think we have to decide now and decide whether we're going to invite them in and, and whether we're going to have this conversation with them, with our foundation, with our, I think that.
So you're, you're asking about that, um, like, um, the slideshow for inviting, inviting members of our stakeholders to come and hear about our, we can certainly talk about doing that, we can schedule that.
When I, when I say our stakeholders, I mean our state delegation.
Delegation with the foundation, with people from the business advisory, so that.
We can do it all at once, I was thinking separate.
No, we should do it at once so that these people see that the delegation is engaged or not engaged.
Yeah, they have to be.
Exactly.
That will put pressure on, when, when other, they've been invited with other people, that will put pressure on them.
It's easy to let them see.
You're talking about a workshop.
I'm talking, yes, well, uh, yeah.
It would have to be a workshop because I think one of the reasons they haven't shown up in the past is because it can get to be a bit of a clown show with, um, so many comments that are being made by people who don't understand the system. So if we don't allow, um, if we just allow a conversation between.
Public comments not required.
Correct, public comments not required. So I think that makes it more likely for them to show up if public comments not allowed.
On the seventh, Susan, is there a briefing scheduled that day?
Yes. November seventh?
Yes. So I'm just wondering if I wanted to have that conversation that.
Do we have time, do we have time with, in other words, your work that's already planned for these sessions? Do we have time to put this in a session, or do we, and if we do, fine, if not, we have to create another date?
Okay, I wanna say yes, 'cause you're not in there now.
No, I know.
In our cabinet, it seems like we're a little light coming up here in terms of topics.
Well, and that is the day after election.
Yeah, right.
So can we at least agree to, to having a session?
Yes.
And, and get staff working on a date and get those invitations out immediately? Beginning of December, is that fair? Third, eleventh, somewhere around there?
I think the potential is, the eleventh might be the day of the board meeting.
I was tentatively thinking of the eleventh for board meeting day, December.
All right, well, even if it's not, you know, it can be the tenth or the twelfth or whatever, but it's somewhere in that range. So get the invitations out and then we'll fill in the details later, is that fair?
Is everybody comfortable with that? Is everybody comfortable with that? Mary, you look like you're not certain.
Well, I'm, I'm a little bit confused about when, when we're doing that. We're going to decide on our four priorities and then...
Present them.
And we're going to...
Four priorities, and I think additional, I think additional priorities as well. I don't, I don't think we've decided on just four.
Right, okay.
I think that, I think that there's a lack of understanding by our state delegation about the complicated nature of education funding.
Right, I understand all that, yeah.
So we need to break that down, explain it to them, and it will be helpful for the other stakeholders in the room to understand that as well.
And then this presentation will be prepared by staff, and we will do it on the 11th of December?
Ish.
Ish, okay. Okay.
So they want it to be approved?
So then are we going to continue this conversation then on the 7th?
To decide the exact subjects that staff will present to the group that day.
Okay. Yes, I'm in agreement.